So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:02 Monday, June 24th. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda from the Select Board members? Diana?
Well, I think maybe towards the end. Oh, I've got it on here. Complaint to help confirm. Okay, never mind.
Great. So we all had a chance to look at the minutes. What do you like to do with the minutes?
Let's sign them.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
All right. Liz makes a motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Call those in favor of approving the minutes from June 10th, 2024 as written. Please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved.
Did you want an extra copy, Liz?
Of the minutes, sure. Thank you.
All right. Sign those. And then Diana. So then we have a space here on the agenda for public comment. I also want to note that we do have on the agenda an item for the Greenwood Lake Association, so we can wait if that's what you're here for. But if there are other public that would like to make a comment now is aside from that, now is the time.
You have questions about the Greenwood Lake Association stuff?
Great. Would you mind just for the record stating your name and?
Yeah. Dennis Barrow.
Dennis Barrow?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
My question is, for my record, a few people, you guys are talking about real small video break in the town.
A property reappraisal?
Correct.
Yep.
Is this all property?
No, it's going to be all properties. It's mandated by the state. We can't get it done until probably two years from now because there aren't enough people to do it.
Correct. Okay. Or it's going to be time long.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you prefer we just do the lakes? No.
I got one on me still. No, this is a question. I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Well, if there's no other public comment, we can move on to the line or the item, which is the Greenwood Lake Association. And if you would, just for your record, state your name.
Yeah, my name's Bob Campbell. I am the current president of the Greenwood Lake Association. Anyway, I just had a couple things, friends and questions. You know, we all know the land trust to the parking area off County Road. And I just kind of wish there would have been maybe some better communication between the town and the association, maybe not wasn't required or whatever. But I do know that a couple of our members that I read across, they're just really unhappy about it. By the time we heard about it, it was pretty much empty. So that being said, Sophie had also mentioned that there was a signage there indicating date parking only. So it's been a couple months now, and there is no signage. I didn't know if that's something the town deals with them or it's something I would have to bring up with her directly from email that she had sent.
I think we're happy to reach out to her.
It's what?
We're happy to reach out to her and ask her about the signage?
Yeah, she should. If she says they will do it.
She should volunteer that, I guess I just would like.
It's not a project, it's not a town project, so there's not much we could do about that.
Yeah.
But I think a phone call from us would be.
That would be very.
Yeah, yeah.
Say Bob Campbell's at our meeting, pretending that there would be signage about date parking only. So I don't see this kind of much use over here, but hey, the waterfall was probably running last year. Normally it's not running either. Is there any other? Is the town working with the land trust to acquire any other property around Greenwood Lake?
We don't, I don't think we usually work with.
We haven't worked with the land trust.
They usually work with the private landowners and.
Yeah, so if you did.
Have you heard any rumors?
When they acquired the land from Myers?
No.
No?
Well, it was a town.
They kept us informed.
It was a town issue, and it was, it definitely came up at quite a few meetings. I wasn't on the board at the time, so.
Imagine that comes off of the tax records, off the taxes.
No, I think they're still in current use. Yeah. But they're pretty sure that was brought up.
Okay.
They're still in current use, so.
So if I understand, like, we were, the Select Board was informed by the Myers family that they were having a conversation with the land trust.
Sure.
And that is, you know, that was a negotiation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so they kind of kept, I think, the Select Board informed. But yeah, and Michael has a little more information, but beyond that, it was a transaction between two private landowners. Michael?
So I was on the Select Board at the time, you know, and it was basically EB High and the Meyer family sold that property to not the Vermont Land Trust, it's the New England Northeast Wilderness Trust. And it didn't, it status as far as taxes or did not change at all of the sun, whatever they call it, where you had your property, you know, forested or whatever, current management is. It stayed the same. So, yeah.
Yeah, cool. And the other, I think, obviously, we're going to be going to the planning commission meeting, which we saw the minutes about them looking for access for a public beach on some lakes around here. I can state to you folks that the association, the seven landowners are unanimously against that. We do have, obviously, you know, we don't own the lake, we have a fishing access there, but we're not in favor of that, and we will be going to the planning commission just to.
Sure, Michael, yes.
I'm going to share the planning commission out, and Town Beach has been a pipe dream of a town for years. We did get, you know, we, in our last meeting, which was last week, that curve around County Road, you know, just it kind of like an ideal place, but we know that that's a pipe dream and it will never happen. Almost all of the lake associations in Woodbury are definitely opposed to Town Beach. So it was just kind of a pipe dream conversation that we included in our minutes, but there's no threat or movement to take any land for a town.
And there's no, no land. There's no land that's not privately owned.
So.
So.
Or somebody who'd have to donate their dog.
Well, that's cool. That's all, that's all I have. You know, we want to, I think we want to be good neighbors to the town and want to continue to be. Our annual meeting is on Saturday, July 20th at 5:00 in the afternoon. This little pop, I think. If any of you would like to come and attend and see what we do at our meetings, we'd be more than happy to have you there. So that's just a personal vacation for me on behalf of the Greenwood Lake Association.
Can I tell a funny story?
Of course.
Years ago, I mean, we're probably talking 20 years ago, Wayne Dunlap was on the planning commission. And he looked on the map and he saw this great big beautiful lake up on the hill, East Long Pond. Greenwood used to be West Long Pond, but now it's Greenwood. And he thought it was so unfair that Greenwood has so much boat traffic and East Long doesn't have any because even though its water belonged to the state, there's no public access. And oh my God, I never knew there were so many camp owners up there because they all came here.
Oh, once they heard that.
For a meeting. They all showed up for a meeting and, yeah.
Well, it's certainly changed from the days when I was growing up over here to have, you know, 20 ski boats and two platoon boats. Now I think we only have one powerboat in on the lake so far. I haven't got our boat in yet. It's still, I stay there every week, it's like a private boat over here. It's pretty peaceful. But thank you again. That's all we have. We secure some of those few points, and I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your phone?
No.
I do have a question. Your line is the secretary of the association. If we were to have problems with the parking situation, who would we call?
It's not a town. So it depends. If it's a town, if it's a town right of way, like there's a gully or something, you could call the town, but otherwise call the land trust. It's, I mean, the wilderness.
I think for the most immediate action on something, you would go to the land trust. But you feel free to.
It's their property.
Feel free to contact us for.
Sophie indicated that she would make sure that people on the phone had her number, and we'll check with them to see if they do it or not, and that they could call her with any issues. So I got to take her for a word.
Can I ask if there haven't been any issues as of yet, correct?
No, but I, the lawyer's number may have been there.
Yeah.
So Sophie did send a letter to all of the camp owners right along with the parking area. And there were two people that contacted me. Chris Myers was a part of that letter. And one of them was worried about a power line that would go to his camp. The other one was worried, apparently in her letter, Sophie had mentioned that there was a boat access there, which was on private land, and that was quickly cleared up. So those are the only two responses that I'm aware of from the letter that she sent out. And she did send it to whoever was the.
I got a copy.
You got a copy of that.
And that was, I was unaware that that was private land at the time, and I found out where it is, and that will be signed, no trespassing, just as an extra precaution. Not that there is enough as a. But no, I'm not so worried about it. At first I was worried about the power coming in, like the public beach access, but I didn't realize that was all private, so.
Wouldn't be surprised if you see a little more action there in the wintertime.
In the wintertime, no waves are out.
Right. But I think, I know the word is out about the skiing up there. So I think that that will be a popular place to ski in the winter.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. So they just, the land trust put that parking lot in on or off?
They paid for it, yep.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thanks for helping with the chairs.
Yeah, I have to pull away.
Okay.
All right. We can move on to Robin and the town clerk's report.
The first thing that I have, what do you have an issue with having your ants? As you start to walk up the stairs, working on the right hand side, somebody came in Thursday and said, you've got an issue out there, and they've got a pretty good pile of sawdust or shavings or whatever you want to call it going on out there.
The town office?
Yes. And sometime in the near future, we're going to have to think about more of them. I only have one space left for recording books. Just so you guys have that in the back of your minds somewhere.
So can those be stored off-site? Is that like a?
No.
No, they need to be stored on-site.
There might be some stuff in the vault now that doesn't have to be in the vault.
Yep.
And I'd be happy to look over some of that with you if you want to. Talk about how we can, you know, once you get stuff downstairs, I think there's some of that stuff that can go downstairs, maybe when you get new shelving and stuff like that.
And the furnace is probably about 85% in. They worked on it last Monday and Tuesday. Thought they were coming back Wednesday, but I haven't seen them since. So I will give them a call tomorrow and see if they've got us down on their schedule for finishing this out.
Yeah.
So they didn't turn the heat on?
No, they didn't turn the heat on. Thank God.
So I know they still have to change that ductwork that they're going to, they're going to just flip it over so that the hot air comes out at this height rather than at the floor height. So, but they know that they have to be there when you're open, right?
Yes.
Or they have a key to the bulkhead?
No.
Okay.
Speaking of the bulkhead, with that rain that we got yesterday, we did have some water that came in.
I did notice that.
How much water?
The concrete was just wet down there. Some of it came along the side of that little room where the pressure tank is.
Okay.
And then it went over by the furnace, but it didn't take up that whole section of room through there. So I don't know if just the bulkhead is going to fix that for us or if we have to get some drainage around the outside of that.
Is that bulkhead?
I would hope that as part of our insurance money, we can just replace that whole door.
There's gaps between like the foundation and where the siding starts and the sheeting, so it's kind of open.
And this week, I'm keeping my schedule pretty open so I don't have Randy with the Iran. That she needs to have done, delivered, whatever. And that's about what I've got.
I don't know why we even put a front row up. Nobody ever wants to sit there. You can have a whole row. Don't be insulted. That's great that she's able to come back and long enough to get the end of the year stuff finished.
That's what she's hoping for, but she was pretty short today when she was there.
So is it worth looking at like pest control or like exterminator for the ants? Is it to that level?
What do you think? Dana's the one that found it for us.
I would at least get something and spray our foundation and the perimeter. There's four shavings there on the post.
Oh, yeah.
Probably stay there and sort it and pull it in, so.
So that's all it takes is some spray?
I would try it.
Yeah.
So who's going to do the spraying? Who's going to do the spraying?
So who's, who's got a account, who's on the account at Poohens?
The town's got one.
Yeah, but, but it has to be certain people that are allowed to use it.
I know my name's on there.
Yeah, I know.
My name's on it.
Lucy's on it. Yeah. Elby's on it. So who wants to buy the spray?
And who wants to apply it?
I do use that. I'll fill that in.
Thank you.
Sure, okay. And your list of things?
Thanks, Ellen.
And Randy did get payroll done, invoices done, so we got a bunch of you guys to sign, and she did her reporters. And then for income, she had some credit of $5,224.50, which is burial fees and library donations recordings. Delinquent taxes was $5,403.37. The Woodbury school overpayment of $22,037.37.
That came back?
That came back. Haysen school overpayment, $28,646.56. And then from V L T C, we got, huh, she's got $31,981.18, which equals $93,892.98. Then we have a state library grant of $300, traffic fines of $83.50. And then for the last two weeks, the payroll was $7,021.2, AP, $37,073.22. And she transferred from the money market to the checking account $40,000.
Can you leave that?
Yeah.
With the payroll orders? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Robin. Took care of both the clerks and the treasurers' report, it sounds like. And Paul?
Moving fast.
All right.
So the insurance change is what I wanted to cover first. We've got, we'll be switching to V I F S starting July 1st off the lead. What we did launch, so we'll be taking over that with this building and that building. They'll take the vehicle coverage and all liability generally.
What's the company again? What's the name of the company?
V I F S Volunteer Fire Fighters Insurance Association. So the one nuance we had discovered in this process was that the workers' comp is a, it's the same policy essentially that we'll be on at the new company. So the town has already paid that policy from January to December 31st. So we'll continue, and I told Robin, or not Robin, Randy, she'll send us quarterly bills to the workers' comp, and then the new broker record, I think, January 1st, 2025. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. We'll still be transferring a little bit of money back in court just to cover that because apparently there's a signed risk policy, it's the same company, and you can't cancel the policy and restart the policy. You have to continue the same policy till the end of the calendar year or fiscal year. So that's the one little nuance of insurance. Just wanted to make you aware of it. And Randy, so hopefully the whole pan out, and then when we switch it, we'll be insuring with the AMX and the fire station.
How will that cost compare workers' comp?
It should be the same.
Okay.
Yes, the same policy. Yeah, it's the same, I guess they assign what they call sign risk pool.
Oh, yeah. Depends on how many.
Essentially, the same pool, so it's good to do to go to the cost and the more than what we're paying.
So you're going to insure the whole building?
We have, yeah, we've been paying all the insurance, all the heat, all the electric over there ever since that boot shop has come on here.
Okay.
And that's a conversation, probably got more for you at some point, but we can decide what we're doing with that building. That's, we'll be out there at some point, some kind of paper, and electric and insurance and heat. But we're not, we're not ready to do that. Maybe just put it on your radar for a future conversation.
Progress looks pretty good over there.
Yeah, you see, we got a foundation there, putting drainage in. I guess we got a little bit of water in there, but I guess you'd expect that when you have a whole other range as much as this last year. As far as I know, the building itself is supposed to start appearing sometime in mid-July, so you should see the slab get finished, all the slot plumbing in the next couple of weeks.
Do you carry insurance on the building as it's being built?
So we have a builder's risk policy over there that we pay for that's done, and then once we have occupancy, then we'll insure it with our new policy. So what this builder's risk is insuring, even the stuff, because a lot of stuff has been ordered, and some of it will be, will be built for and restored off-site, and we'll pay for all that stuff and pay insured, I should say, when it's out of warehouse or on the week. So we do have builder's risk policy. The bank wouldn't let you have it without it, so. So that's on radar for hopefully November-ish. We'll be in there, I hope. But you all know, construction can be. Nothing of a surprise over there, why is a little bit of a sprain found at the bottom of the bank? That was entirely unexpected, and everything else seems to have been.
So they're going to just seed and mulch that bank?
Yeah.
Some kind of special.
They'll get to replace it.
Some special.
I think they're going to use these straw mats.
Yeah.
Hitched out.
Well, that's what they use over here on the ground.
Yeah, maybe like these.
This should be something more rugged for that kind of a slope.
The bank's actually pretty stable. You see how hard it really is. It's washing, but we'll get some stuff on there pretty soon to keep washing, but I don't think it's going to fall.
Nice to see that it was, it wasn't a mudslide.
Yeah, I was, I was just more annoyed. I didn't really expect it because the bank kind of goes up and then goes down the other side, and there's a lot of ledge in there. We hit the ledge a few places and then, I don't know, some dirt. I don't think it's going anywhere. There's enough, there's probably 25 feet behind the building, so anything ever has a problem with that.
Probably have some kind of a wall.
It's, I think we're just going to seed that.
Really?
Yeah, that's the plan. We can't get any engineer or any wall company wants to deal with this.
Well, then.
Welcome to today's B O One liability issues. So that's that. We haven't moved that far with FEMA. Just get commiserated with me that I've had two more meetings in last month with FEMA, and they're quite lost. They don't even know what they're supposed to be doing. I got quite frustrated with them coming out on Thursday. And you used, did you talk to Chase Dearman from the state?
I've been dealing with the guy and his life.
Okay, I got a different guy. So there's, the state has hired a contractor, and then I have state liaison for emergency management. So they were in my meeting where I had expressed my frustration with FEMA as nicely as I could. And they met me on the Friday, and we created a strategy to try to get this building dealt with as far as completing the, what we're going to, what the disposition of the funds is going to be for the recovery. So understanding recovery, we were in response, recovery, the next steps, mitigation, we're still stuck in recovery, right? The road, you're kind of in the same spot that you get the check, and then, so we're trying to maximize the amount that FEMA could pay us for that building to the end that with the USDA grant, we have matching money, you got to come up with. So the goal is to try to make that at least match what we got as well, not give the money from anything else. That's the plan.
So the money you get from a buyout.
There's the buyout, there's the recovery funds. So essentially, they got to put it back to where it was. And what I found out from the state is they also require to make it co-compliant, constructionally compliant, ADA compliant. So I've had to go hire an architect to go and do that. That's only, we've got to establish a budget of what it would cost to do that, because that's what FEMA actually owes us according to their own rules, which is what I found out Friday. So that could be, who knows? But that's the number we got to work with, not the insurance number. So that's, and that's all I know really, with this digit. So I'm working to get that. They said that we should go, we're going to bring that number to FEMA and say, no, this is what you're supposed to be working with. Because right now, we're no further than we were in December with the building, because they just completely dropped the ball. They didn't do a site inspection, they didn't do a whole bunch of things. So we'll see if that is resolved in a few weeks here, I just don't know. And then USDA, I'm getting the architect hired, I'm getting the engineers hired to get the front-end part of it done so we can apply for the money, which, that's been a little bit of a challenge too, because the, just the documents that tell you what to do are pages and pages and pages long to. I keep finding engineers who say, hold on, you can do it, and then they read it, they go, no, I gotta do it. So right now, trying to get an environmental study done, but apparently I need to get a different environmental study company because the one we were going to use, they can't do it, so welcome to the end of here. So we got, there's a lot of approaches. The buyout stuff is in, according to John Gordis, that our application is in where that goes up now. So, but again, the goal of this is to come up with the, I think it's around $375,000, you got to come up with up to that to match what the Congress is putting. Try to make it as easy as possible. So where we landed, I don't know yet. The goal is to get projects submitted by the end of summer, get it approved, we could go to construction documents by the end of late fall and out to bid, hopefully late fall, early winter, hopefully building next spring. I'm smiling when I say that because that's ambitious from looking at the building, got a climate.
Yeah. It only took like 10 years to get this part.
Yeah.
You expect to get the next part in a year?
Well, the USDA is pushing it. She's the head of USDA, wants us to get moving. Senator wants us to get this moving, so hopefully, right now, we're holding it up. We just got to get our front-end stuff done, but it's a little frustrating trying to, I don't want to pay for stuff twice, so I'm trying to make sure the architect I hired is still there with submitting and managing USDA projects, because anyone who's dealt with the federal thing realizes there's really restrictive administrative requirements. So I'm going to be setting up the architect to do all, all that, just to stay on top of it, not with this. And I don't want to keep guessing because I'm constantly going to guess. Better off just pay for it once. But I'll keep you up to date as soon as I know stuff. And they look, the buyouts, I'm not, you remember how long the last one took, right? This one, if that comes to pass, I don't know that that's a given, you guys will be interested in that, because it's the end of how to be the person who does it. Take any questions if you have any?
I have one question. Would your contractors drive over and then park around you? Can you get them to like park into the curb? It's a long curb.
I noticed that, yeah, I'll park with them.
And the only reason why I'm asking is because when the post office rents the space, they also rent parking spaces.
Yeah, well, I saw that the other day, they parked, yeah. The problem with that is they had concrete, people here, it's like, I'll mention, I'll talk to Spades tomorrow and just have him mention it, because that way I can't, I don't know much to know where everyone's coming. I'll tell Spades, if you have a problem, just let me know, and I'll, I'll go deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
Although, because I can't, I can't promise you there won't be another issue just because I don't know who else coming. We'll try. Fair enough? Yeah. So again, if there's a problem, call me.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll deal with it.
Thanks, pretty thorough.
Sure, sweet.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Road report.
What happened to the bicycle guy?
Michael's not here, right?
Why not?
Michael's not here unless.
Does he need to be here? You were gonna make a decision on the.
I know.
But I actually missed that by accident, so I, I'm happy to get back up here a second. And we can talk with Alfie if you don't mind.
If nobody's here to, to make the case, we'll just have to put it off.
Well, weren't we basing it on, off his kind of price, some posts?
Did that.
Did that. Did we already get prices from Michael? I can't remember.
He did, he sent us the prices for the signs.
He was gonna get prices, yeah.
He, he did give you prices. Pretty much the same evening as the slip where you.
You're right.
They came in later that evening when we got home.
Was it $1,800?
That sounds familiar.
I can find that. Um, what'd you find out?
The sign, the sign posts and managers equal $110 apiece.
Okay.
And they need 16 of them, I think is what they were saying. There were eight sites and how many, two signs free, so.
So 16 total. All right, you were gonna go get some, maybe not all.
I can't hear.
Okay.
We got the signs, they're in stock.
Okay.
You what?
I have the sign, the sign posts.
Oh, okay, the sign, yeah.
If we're not doing some good products, we use them on individual for other products. I did get signs, they are available.
The posts, so we just have to approve getting the signs?
You didn't get the signs. Nobody supported this. We haven't approved the signs yet.
So he's got, he said that there are only 14. It turns out there's only 14 at 6525. With shipping, it's 8330.
So you're talking $200 apiece before you include the labor?
Going 90, $955 just for the signs. Minus the previously approved money, 840. But we said that was gone, right? That's not.
Yeah, that's like $800 from years ago. That's history.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it sounds like it's roughly $955 for just the signs.
And $2,000 for the posts, thereabouts.
So three grand.
Mm-hmm. I'm waiting for somebody to convince me that it's a good idea. Go for it.
Do you ride a bicycle?
What?
Do you ride a bicycle?
No, I don't.
Try it on the ground or try it where it isn't.
Yeah.
See, you don't need to.
Yeah, I'm sure I would be scared anytime.
This is, this is for public safety, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just not convinced that it's gonna help public safety. If, if I really thought it was, yeah, I'd be willing to spend whatever. But I just, I think it's possible that they could be misinterpreted and tell bicyclers that they can ride in the middle of the road with no problems. I'd love to tell a story about that, but not with a camera on.
But it's, it does sound like they can, right?
They can what?
Ride, like legally, if I understood our conversation last time, legally bicyclists have the right to, and those corners, corners ride in the middle, in the middle of the lane, not the middle of the road.
I mean, they're supposed to, at least in cities, they're supposed to kind of ride with the traffic. But they can't really do that here because they don't go fast enough. I mean, they don't go 35 miles an hour. The cars are usually going 35, you know? In a town where you're talking 15, 20 miles an hour, the bikes can keep up anyways.
Do we have money in the budget? Are we, did we talk about this for the signs, not the posts, for the signs themselves?
We didn't. We had, there was $2,000 in the budget last year and there's $2,000 in the budget next year. That's the sign budget and it didn't include consideration of this.
Essentially the signs will pick up our.
Our whole sign budget, okay.
For fiscal year 24 or 25?
What?
For which fiscal year?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
For which fiscal year?
So $2,000 was for fiscal year 24 and as of the last meeting, there was about $1,000 left. And Alfie went and overspent that. But so there'll be $2,000 more, which is the sign budget for FY25.
And we anticipate, well, we usually, do we usually use all of that?
Usually, uh, you're hard to tell without going back.
It's hard to tell, we get, come on, or if it gets small, there's a lot of things going on. So we, we, we play it forward this spring actually. Doing that same, I can see them cutting it right off. An accident, I've seen them run over, you know? So here for the yard, we have a fair amount of signs.
Okay.
And we carry a few down from the couple, we're not on us and.
Yeah. Sound okay?
Uh, yeah. I didn't find them, but Sophie, your person, might give you a leg people would have.
So what's the board, what would the board like to do in terms of the bicycle, bicycle safety?
Should we let Michael have another opportunity to sell us on his, his idea?
I feel like we've talked it to death, honestly. I feel like we've.
What?
I feel like we've talked it to death already and we just need to make a decision. My opinion.
Okay, well, he was here at the last meeting and he did send us a lot of information. So, except that he didn't have anything on the prices.
If we buy the signs and that depletes your budget, sign budget, where do we pull money from for signs that are stolen or need to be replaced for the rest of the year?
Just go over budget.
Just go over budget.
Yeah, we go over. Or we can make decisions to pull out of something or not expanding. I think the budget is just a byline.
Sure, yep.
So we can play with that some. The board should make that decision at that point. $2,000 is a lot of money to pull from another line item.
Sure. So what would the board think about tackling this as a multi-year project? So we buy a certain number of signs that was, that is within our budget this year and then plan for, and maybe we hit the worst spots and leave that to, leave that to the folks that know, prioritize some of these spots more than others. We buy half the signs this year and plan to buy the other half next year.
I think that is a very good idea.
You what?
I like Chris's idea.
You like that idea?
Skip, you want to answer?
As Alfie said, and I think you did too, Chris, this is the budget, this is the budget. So just going over this first sheet on Alfie's budget. For colors, budget, budgeting for fiscal year 24 for colors, $10,000 is all. Actual expenditure is $3,959. So there's approximately $6,000 dollars in colors that is not spent in fiscal year 24. So we have approximately 13 or 14 days in that, in that 24. So why would, why would you use a carrier worth $1,000 dollar this time? But it potentially saves some.
Now, just get it down on, now.
For, yeah, look at the bottom line though. The whole highway budget is $47,000 in the negative. So, yeah, you could go, I did that too. I went through these and tried to figure out which was over and which was under, but really, because of FEMA, everything is screwed up this year.
That's what I'm saying. Because of FEMA, some of these line items aren't exactly. Because particularly colors, when you bought colors, it went under the FEMA line item and not went under the color line item. So, but I agree, I agree with Skip. There's, there are other line items that may have money left over to help with this. I'm just saying, I'm the board to make that decision.
So it's, it's not that we don't have the money or we can't come up with the money. It's that whether or not we think it's a justifiable expense.
I'm a bit torn on this, but I do feel like we have some really bad corners. I get nervous when my kids are riding their bikes. I get nervous sometimes when I'm running because I've almost been hit.
And you think that those signs, let's say, bikes use falling?
I don't think it matters really what the sign says. I think, to me, it's more about bringing drivers' attention to the fact that it's a bad corner and you need to slow down. So if those signs are what has been determined to be the best option to do that, like I'm fine with the signs themselves. And I'm a little bit torn because I hate to just keep throwing money out at things. But I think that is probably a good idea. And it's already been approved is the other thing, like that's the other piece. The select board previously has already approved it, so.
Fair enough.
Well, there's not quite.
Here, and then it's that they're for themselves.
I guess, you know, I guess if, if, it sounds like to me, and this is my two cents, is that there's a strong opinion that it could really save lives. And if it's a small price to pay, it's like having good snow tires, right?
Yeah.
Well, I thought it would have, I certainly would be willing to spend any money if I thought it was gonna have that impact.
I think it will slow people down. I think it's a unique sign and there, presumably there are no signs indicating that it's a dangerous turn corner. So there's no signage now. So I guess I would be inclined to go for it. But how we do it, I'm, I'm flexible whether we do it all. Right now, I'm for whether we pay for it over a couple of years. But if we're gonna do it, maybe we just do it. Skip.
So you can also take into account that there will be FEMA money coming in at FY25.
You think that's gonna happen?
After today, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so there'll be approximately $300,000 coming in, in FY25. So that will help with Alfie's budget and will help with the municipal budget. So with all of that, with some surplus in the budget already, you know, maybe it's just like, do it.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of $1,000 worth of signs, which presumably would be 14 signs for certain corner, blind corners in town.
Let me do my math. Is a thousand enough? I don't think so.
He's got 14 at 8330.
I have $1,166.20.
All right. I amend my motion. I guess it was bad math that he.
It was an estimate.
All right.
That's what I got.
Yeah. So I'll amend the motion to approve $1,200.
Up to $1,200.
Up to $1,200 in signs.
Well, we're also approving the posts.
Right, we're gonna approve the whole thing.
I thought that they were already purchased.
No, that was the deal last week at the last meeting. We were gonna talk about the total cost, whether or not.
It was two grand, you said?
Rob, it's, now that I'm hearing 14, it's lower. There are $110 apiece per, per sign.
So it's gonna be about $200 apiece, right? Would the, did you say the signs were 88 something?
That side for 8330, yeah.
Plus 110?
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll cost 200 times 14.
So total of $2,706.20 for everything.
So I will withdraw my motion and make a new motion to approve the purchase of signs and posts not to exceed $2,800.
Not including labor.
Not including labor.
And I'm assuming that it sounds like Michael was gonna point out the locations.
Yeah.
Is that not funny? He's got a laugh already, okay. Because that's kind of crucial if there, if there are certain sites, certain corners that want to be placed correctly. And I don't wanna make that decision.
Yeah, I think that was the deal. So he would go. Any more discussion? I am?
No, I just, I just don't like the sign itself. I don't find a bicycle share the road or a, you know, curve ahead or something like that would make, to me makes more sense. I just don't like the idea of bicycles being told that they can use the whole lane and they don't have to get over. Because even if they're in the middle of their lane, you're still gonna have to go around them when you're driving. So I just don't.
I think that that's the point. They're in the middle of the lane, so while they're around the blind curve, you don't pass them. You wait until you get around the blind curve and then you can, am I right?
It's just like a curve. If you have a curve in front of you and you're on a blind corner, you probably wouldn't pass them.
We would hope.
So they look around blind cars, they're gonna move out into the middle of the lane. Liz, you have a discussion?
I'm good.
So a motion has been made. All those in favor of approving purchase of the signs, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, all those against?
I'm not really gonna say no.
Abstain.
I don't think it's a good idea. I'll abstain, yeah.
All right, so motion passes with one abstention. All right. Hopefully that's the most contentious thing I can worry about tonight.
Oh, no.
Did I just jinx it? All right, now we can do the road report.
Okay.
All right.
So county road extension, still waiting on that. I think it's raining, washed it again. Here is bad, the water here is bad. It'll just take a little bit of time and then it'll go over to a gravel or something. Still waiting on a couple of studies for that one color.
Is the upper culvert in or the lower culvert?
The lower culvert is in.
It is in.
Yeah.
And how'd that handle the water?
Uh, fine.
Great.
Yeah. I can see any issues with that. We put a bigger one in than what was there before. So she'll be all set there. And then we have moved on to West Lurberry. And we got the banks where the road was a road, we got that hardened. The new culvert that I'm waiting, was waiting to finish that will come tomorrow morning. He called me this afternoon so we can finish that. Since then with this new rain, there, there are culverts up there that are just too small. I've, I've found two of them that have washed out every, almost every time it rains.
I'm sorry, where, where's that?
In West Lurberry.
Oh, on the class four section or?
No, no, this is not.
Oh, okay.
This is on West Lurberry Road. And so I feel like we need to upgrade them. They are 15s now and I want to go with 18, which is state standard. And while we've got the bigger escalator, I feel like it's the best time to do that. So I think I'm gonna do that this week. In between fixing the wash outs and stuff that I heard over the weekend. But our grader broke down today. It'll be a very simple fix, but it was unexpected.
It was what?
It was unexpected.
Oh, I thought you said uninspected.
So the service guy's coming tomorrow, which should be up and on with that. So not, not a big deal.
Does that machine run pretty much non-stop all summer?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So it's just, it's something to do with the D E D F, which is the exhaust fluid. And they've got the parts that are coming tomorrow. Hopefully they know, should be fixed up. But kind of, you know, buying today because trying to. But kind of looking behind today because trying to fix the roads from the rain and washing. The radiator went down at ten o'clock. I'm like, what am I going to do? So I ended up sending the bucket over out and we scraped off a bunch of, filled in a bunch of the rust to get it fixed up.
Was there a lot of road damage?
A fair amount.
Yeah.
A fair amount, kind of scattered, mostly the hills because the rain came so fast. There's still a bunch that we still have to do. West Woodbury didn't get it back, but I didn't get a machine up there, so I'm going to go there tomorrow hopefully. But yeah, it was, it was severe. It was pretty severe. I'm glad it didn't last as long as it did last year because it was the same magnitude of rain. But it was, it was severe. But I feel like we lucked out. Calis got roads closed. They had to close roads.
Really?
I don't know how Calis made out, but.
Part of it was pretty hard because I just asked for it soon today.
Yeah. So all in all, I think we lucked out this time. But I think that it's important that we continue to change out these cobbles to bigger sizes because this rain is just going to keep coming. So while we've got them, we can just get them out if our budget allows for it. So I want to, I want to keep slicing them up.
It makes sense.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
So you still have County Road waiting for the H and H?
Yeah, yeah.
So still going to have to keep that big excavator?
No, I can probably, if it comes to that, I can change it to the small.
And you rented by the week or something?
I rented it for a month. And so this year, that month expires this week, by the end of this week, hopefully, so. But I am hoping I can get done with it.
Yeah.
West Woodbury is the last big one, other than the one in West County. But I said I can do that, but the small one. Unless it's, unless they tell us it has to be some enormous size cobbler. We won't know until we get to H and H.
Well, you know, it's up to you if you need it, I guess.
Yeah, well, it kind of kills me to have it sit, sit still too, you know? Because you pay for it, whether it's city or work. So I'm trying to keep it as busy as I can. Which this week I'll be fine because I could change those other cobbles to a bigger size.
And you're not planning on hanging on to it for the H and H study rate because you don't know when that's going to be?
Right, that could be, that could be August, December, three and a half.
Cool.
I don't want to hold on to it.
Yeah. What's the trucking fee to get it? I'm just curious, like, how much it costs to re, renew the rental if you've given it back already?
Oh, it comes from a small player. So I actually truck it myself.
Okay.
From my truck.
Yep.
So I charge you two hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay, so.
So it's not huge.
It's not crazy. Yeah, probably better than keeping it when we don't really need it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just so you know, if you were hiring elevants, it would be easily five hundred bucks.
Okay, well, thank you for the deal.
Because it's convenient. It's, it's convenient for, like, there's one West County, there's one in West Woodbury. It's more about timing. If I had to call elevants and I wait for them for two days or a lot, it's just, I can move it on either.
Makes sense.
So then I'm sure it's all totally, it's all legal. So I'll probably let that machine go back at the end of this, this one month at least. Unless something major comes up or.
All right.
I think that's all I have. Something's telling me there's something more, but I can't think of it right now.
You can jump in again.
Oh, yeah, I have something. I did finally remember to email Swenson today and Kevin is going to have somebody contact me about the rock drill. In which case they'll have to coordinate with you. I don't know whether that is something that you go and borrow the equipment or they, I hope the equipment comes with an operator. Yeah, so they just have to get it scheduled and if, what's his name can make it, the engineer?
Nate.
Nate, yeah. He said if he could make it, great, but if not, I guess.
Okay, do, do, should I be part of that schedule?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, really, yeah.
Do I, do I call Nate to start with?
Well, he's gonna, one of them is going to get in touch with me and then I'll hand it over to you. Because that's the way Kevin left it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just let me know when you want me to know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't need to be involved any further.
This is for what? You guys, sorry.
A drill for, for to, to, for the Town Highway twenty-three to check for ledge, I guess.
We have to do more for testing for bridges.
Gotcha.
To know what's, what's under there and how far down to get that off.
Okay.
So that's what the drill will do for us.
Got it.
And Randy's going to donate that for us or?
What?
Is Randy going to donate that for us or?
I didn't ask. I mean, I didn't mention that. I just said Woodbury needs more help or something like that.
Okay. We can, we can cross that, we can cross that bridge now.
Right, yeah, they can send us a bill if they want. We can add it to the female list.
Yeah, just, yeah, do that.
No?
It's part of the project.
Yeah, if they, I mean, if we had to hire somebody else, it would be a lot more expensive and a lot more difficult scheduling and stuff. If they can just run down the road. I don't know how important it is for Nate to be there.
Very, he wants to.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's going to want to take samples and measure the distance of these holes.
Okay.
And he'll, yeah, keep track of that.
Okay.
So he definitely will want you there.
Okay.
You want me just to take that over now? I can call Nate and see what his scheduling is.
Sure.
Kind of figure out when it can all happen.
Sure.
Okay.
One of them gets back to me tomorrow. I'll just send that along to you, to your Woodbury garage email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Because the sooner we get that, the easier it'll be for the actual design work.
Yeah, right.
And wouldn't it be great if we could start that this fall?
We didn't, Nate didn't think he'd have that report until end of summer though, right?
Right.
Right, but some of his work done for him.
Oh, right.
The hydraulic stuff is done. And now if we can get the drilling done.
Yeah.
He's got everything he needs.
He's got everything he needs to figure out materials and sizes, shapes and all that, right? So I'll, I'll get with him, get with Nate and see what he got.
Skip.
So there will be an RFP issue for work proposal to Town Highway twenty-three, twenty-four bridges.
Oh, yeah, that's part of the, that's part of the contract with Robles Engineering.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm not going to write that one.
And he, I think I said this before, but he expects, once he gets the design work, to get the bidding process going. But there won't be any time for construction this year. But he'll get in line for getting those little cement things made.
It'll be a lot slower. If that's what, we don't know if it's a design.
Right.
It could be aluminum or galvanized.
Yeah.
Which would be faster, easier.
Yeah, I mean, those H and H studies, they had a list of different options. I mean, it's, of course, the engineer can design whatever they want, but, but they list that one first. But I guess according to Nate, that's kind of easy to put in and not very expensive compared to some. But, but it's, takes a while to, to get the stuff, materials.
Yeah, well, we, we as a town have to say what we put there too.
Oh, well, yeah.
Just wanted to make that clear. Because we do.
Not me.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll give a whole name and get that process.
Thanks, though. Moving on, we have our recovery officer's report. Skip.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
So we've been doing this, uh, we're doing like, and meeting with just Danielle, Danielle and myself. Seems like she and I did more work than, than we've worked just, she and I maybe do more work between other people. So we met last June nineteenth and we completed all the small permanent work, project certifications and analogies. And what this is, is just Danielle and I sort of planned all the work and the projects that have been completed are complete. All the work is completed, we certified that. And then about this FEMA to work what we obligated to come so we can start doing something. So the, so anyhow, that's all done for all the projects in Woodbury.
Wow.
They're completed once it's all done. So it's, in essence, it's the all of the FEMA. And so I had a meeting today with FEMA, I'm not sure if I'm at it, so. So I was feeling frustrated today and I sent a email to my friends named Andrew Flack, who's the State of Vermont rep for Town Woodbury and such. So I, I'll just do the, the inbred version. I said Danielle and I completed and signed the small permanent work certifications and analogies. They're all at FEMA's hands, we got uploaded to the Grand Score and he emailed to program delivery manager. So, and that's, that's key. When they have this, there's no reason why we can't move forward with these projects. So I went on and asked, I'm curious why none of the Woodbury projects have been designated as obligated. When you say obligated project, that starts the money from. So some of these documents have been in, in PNC, which is a legal field, which is crazy. And so I went on, if I'm naive to believe the simplified procedure, the street line process, make it less almost for the applicants, lead as applicants. And so then I went on, as a recite of this bar of conference call this morning, which I was with six FEMA staffers, facilitating open this tabletop site visit and turned it to a service. So he wrote back and he said, it looks like you have a few projects that are consolidated resources. That's that place in Port Rico, but look at our stuff and say they did it right and did it not right and they come back with the touches. Not a peep from those folks down there, on what they do. So anyhow, he, he seems to believe that Old Cory Road will be the first obligated project. But it doesn't put a date to that. So he went on to say, yeah, you weren't right. Simplified procedures only meant it was slightly less numerous for the applicants. And that FEMA doesn't require the town to produce all the documents, which we've already done. Time sheets, you know, material, rental equipment, done all that stuff. And so, and as he says, you were right, so. Now that I know that, pissy. Don't put that in there.
I was curious what you told him. I thought you told me.
And then he said, no. So anyhow, that's, that's where we stand. It's, you know, everything is just, it's there. And so this guy, Andrew, Flack, said that Town Woodbury has gone through four program delivery managers since last September. We are now on our third litigation officer. And the folks I met with today, I met with seven FEMA people doing a tabletop site visit for Town Highway twenty-three, twenty-four bridges in the town offices. And we didn't, we didn't get anything done. We were supposed to fill out a form, which is eight pages long. And this is a site inspection report, category of sea for bridges. Didn't touch this one for Town Highway twenty-four, didn't touch one for Town Highway twenty-three, nor did we touch one for the town offices. It was just chatter, 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 chatter between them. One of the poor guys has COVID, so we sound like he's dying on the phone. And they, they, they really had to get their act together. If Danielle and I are frustrated, we're pretty level-headed people. I can just imagine a lot of folks like that. So anyhow, I have another conference call with this guy tomorrow to just me and I, to do the tabletop site inspections for the bridges and the town offices. So I think it'll be much more complicated tomorrow. I'm hoping it will.
And it's this guy Andrew that you do this?
Andrew is the state guy. The guy I'm meeting with is a new guy. Yet another man named Vincent Johnson, who's the guy who was in State of Vermont for four weeks, got COVID. And now he's back in Louisiana. Doesn't sound like it as well. So anyhow, that's for tomorrow and I hope to get through these three documents so we can move forward. The bridges and the town offices, they're very much interested in the bridges. You know, they were asking about how, what is the design of the, of the. I said, all the information for the H and H survey, engineering reports is all on the Grand Score. And, you know, you guys agree that. We're going up for an RFP and based on that, we'll move forward with, with the projects. I don't expect that to happen until twenty twenty-five. So I'll wait for an extension in December for these two projects and just move forward with it. You know, it can be frustrating, but we're almost here. I'd like to see some money. And that's a positive program. So that's tomorrow. I have a meeting on Wednesday with program delivery manager. And we're going to go over, I don't know what the agenda is. He's supposed to set the agenda up next week. And I'm hoping he'll say that yes, you have three projects that are obligated. So our protest is going to be on the agenda, if not all of them.
And currently we have one project, right, that's in?
We have three projects that are in the CRC.
But we have one that's obligated, right, or none?
No.
None, okay.
This guy Andrew Flack seems to believe that Old Cory wouldn't let him work on a project. It would be the first.
The first, right.
Because it's been there for a while. That makes sense. But, yeah, we'll see. So I'll know more Wednesday. Danielle, we had a meeting that Monday. You cannot send them any more documentation. You're sending them everywhere. It's just like, you have to speak your head into something. Yeah, so. So that's it for my report. I hope I didn't sound too frustrated. Or that either. And, uh. Any questions?
No, again, thank you for this work, it's gotta be incredibly frustrating to do all this.
It's good.
Yeah. Believe that we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're talking about mitigation, though?
Yeah, it looks like you and Michael are both up next again for the flood mitigation projects, Buck Lake Brook and Cabot Road.
So there was an opportunity presented to us, Michael, you want me to start?
Go ahead. I mean, you have two different things, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is an opportunity out of the blue, a gentleman named Edmund Long sent to our program delivery manager, reported it to me. I think I sent it to you guys, and I said, "Oh, by the way, they seem to believe that there's a mitigation opportunity on Cabot Road." So, and the email from him, mitigation costs could be up to a project cost, which is over $17,000. And if they do, please have them provide details of what they want to do, including dimensions and associated costs.
So you would think of something that might cost $17,000 and then?
Yeah, but it's not as easy as that.
Was this tied to a specific section of road? Like, I saw your email, but I wasn't able to show it. Oh, yeah, I didn't see that.
So now there's the beginning and ending of the section of road, and it's an 800 feet that was wiped out, I believe, at Cabot Road, and right inside of the road, so then we'll be, there's a mitigation opportunity there, I don't know how we came to that conclusion.
Not a small project, I think, but I don't know.
Michael, when you did that walkthrough with all the people, did they come all the way down?
I don't know where the part of the, is it where the bank washed out? I think it's the old Cory entrance? Is that where the mudslide goes? Is that true? Is it where the mudslide goes? No, the mudslide goes further up.
Okay.
I think, right, isn't this, is this the Old Cory entrance? No, it's the Old Cory, the Old Cory access.
So it'd be by the microcarrying emergency stand?
Right, that's right, it go right through, their houses in between.
Did anything happen there?
Yes, we had a major one there.
Okay.
And that's one of our sites, that's one of our projects.
Is it between the two coordinates on the map, like, there's the one and the two coordinates? It's the section in between those?
That's right.
Okay.
So this is an opportunity to do a better job at a place you've already fixed, is that?
That's what they're saying.
And you got a call out of the blue from a FEMA rep, or Edmund Long, works for FEMA?
Yeah, he's a key mitigation officer, and somehow, the out of the blue said, "Hey, we think you have a chance to have a mitigation project for that particular section of Cabot Road, and we're prepared to pay you $17,000, blah, 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 which is the cost of the fix."
But he didn't propose the fix?
No.
So we get the fix in the dollar for the mitigation?
Right, so they might pay us $17,000 and change for the fix, if we choose to mitigate it, they'll pay us up to another $17,000 for mitigation.
They would mitigate the mitigation?
If this was a bit of a...
Oh, okay, the one that was already done and wasn't mitigated.
Yeah, they just put back the original.
Right.
Now they want to say, "We'll give you another $17 to mitigate."
But we have to come up with that mitigation plan.
Plan, right?
Which would involve another engineer and another study, or is that something that I'll see?
That's what I...
I think it would just offer, like, stone line ditching, upgrading the side of collars, right, wouldn't that be mitigation?
That could be.
It would be good, I think, to try to find out from FEMA, what do things should happen.
This is like the government showing up at your door and saying, "Hi, the government, we really hope."
Couldn't we get our $300,000 instead of $17,000?
Yeah, well, it could be a different department, different section of FEMA looking at this.
It is, it was an entirely different setup.
So it's totally separate from the actual FEMA.
Yeah.
This is mitigation FEMA, where we've been working with...
Just fixing.
Fixing, right, but I think it's worth looking at, if they can give us some sort of detailed criteria of what they expect for mitigation, then it might be worth getting that money for.
Definitely worth it.
Yeah, it might be good for you to tell them what you're thinking, I mean, if you think of something...
I think I put a thumbnail together of how you would do it, you know, which you learned from the orange book, the layout, specifications of how you would pick something like this.
The orange book? Is that what you said? What's that?
It's a specography, transcan book.
Yeah.
It's not the guideline for maintaining roads, all specs and how to build ditches and color sizing and all that stuff.
So I put a disclaimer in my last sentence in the email, I said, "At a minimum, there'd be more work of road crew, more work of FEMA points of contact, more money in the budget, with no fixed time payment for repayment." So those things you should consider.
So think of something that really needs to be done, I guess, or else forget it.
Specific to that site.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Do you feel like that site really needs work? Like, I know you just put it back to where it was, do you feel like it's something bad's gonna happen again if it doesn't get mitigated better?
I mean, if anything's possible, I mean, if we have another event like...
Like yesterday?
Could very well happen again.
Yeah.
Most likely not the same magnitude, because we put a big stone in where it was washed out, so that big stone is more likely to hold up. But it seems like if we can get the question answered, and get it this clear, it's worth getting that $17,000 to stone line that section of ditch, you know, clean out the ditch properly, stone line any collars that need to be upgraded. I mean, I'm thinking, a lot of our collars are on the two-foot now, the state requires 18 inches, so the next step is two-foot. And I'm thinking, that's what we gotta do with these rains that are coming. So I think that if we can get some money like this, then that section of road, we don't have to think about it again. If we've got upsized collars, we've got stone lined, we don't have to think about that, we can put our regular budget line in other slots that don't get covered by this, so I think, yes, absolutely, we should, you know, push for this and try to get what more information we need, and...
So you don't need an H&amp;H when you're improving, increasing the size of the cove? Is that only when it's a stream?
It's a year-round stream.
Okay. So if it's just a regular cove that goes between ditches?
If it's just surface water drainage, then you don't need...
Oh, good.
And is that the case in this section? Do you know it well enough to know?
I don't think there's a year-round stream there.
Okay, cool.
I don't think, but it's a good point, because now we know how long it takes to get an H&amp;H, we should start thinking about that. Because, I mean, ultimately, eventually, ultimately, the FEMA deadline is gonna come for this July event, you know, whatever it is, it's been a condescension, and without an extension, it's January 14th, 2025.
But we're gonna get an extension.
2025, you said?
I'm sorry, thanks at least.
That's not enough.
I'm just saying, you know, this is a brand-new thing, a brand new project, if we're gonna jump on it, we should get the hydraulic studies, get the stuff that we need to be able to do it, not to mention the time for the road crew to pull it off in those little ones.
So you'll go take a look at it, and then touch base with Skip about maybe recommendations, and then Skip, you don't mind reaching out to Edmund to find if...
If you might, please.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a good plan.
Just stay away from those streams.
Buck Lake Brook?
So, I think it was in March, we had a number of people from the state come to look at Buck Lake Brook. We started with a couple of those roads, worked our way up and down, and part of that was when the H&amp;H people were here to look at the bridges too, it kind of wasn't the original intention of that meeting, but that was a part of that, but it was a fellow named Ben Matthews who came, who was kind of a detrans permanent person, but he did have quite a bit of education and experience with streams, and he did recommend a few mitigation things for the streaming. I called the meeting because I wanted to try to figure out a way to work on Buck Lake Brook so that the village doesn't get flooded all the time. Originally, the old store thing, that was what all of that started from, is to have something down to the brook so that the village doesn't get flooded, and that just kind of ended up with removing the old store. So this was another step with that same question, and there was a fellow from the CVRPC that was at that gathering also. And at that point, I was, there was funding from this flood resiliency, flood something or other that Vermont Resiliency Management was doing, and I was hoping to get some money from that, at least for our engineering study. And then that funding dried up, the fellow from the CVRPC and the rest of the crew down there were aware of a brand-new program. It's dealing with FEMA again, but FEMA has given the state $90 million for hazard mitigation funding related to flood throughout the state. And this money, the state would actually pay the 25% that is, you know, with FEMA, it's 75% that they pay, and then the town comes up with the 25%. The state pays some of that, but this would be no cost at all to the town.
No match, you said? No cost to the town, is that what you said?
No cost to the town at all, this particular body of funding. And it would, technically, it would pay for both the study and the implementation of that work, so it would pay for everything. It would be, it's not gonna happen the next year, it's like a three- to five-year project probably, and we're dealing with FEMA, so things would move slow. It pretty much feels like CVRPC would help with the, there's a pre-application that at this point is due August 16th. They bumped the date out a number of times, but right at the moment, there's a pre-application date, and that would be basically coming up with an expression of the need for what's happened, so we would need to gather information, I'm thinking that the information that you gathered originally, Diana, for the old store, I would like to talk to Paul S. Rudy about the cost that it incurred to the fire department, and then somehow, I'm hoping that there's a record of different times that the village was flooded, like since Irene, which is, to my knowledge, is at least four or five times, if not...
Since Irene.
Since Irene?
Yeah. But I don't know for sure, so I'm hoping that somewhere there's a record of that. So we have to prove our case, I'm sure that it's gonna be pretty competitive, CVRPC will help us with the application. I'm kind of pursuing this through the planning commission, but it does seem to me that before we can ever consult anything that might happen to the village, we better do what we can do to mitigate the flood in the village. If we can get water to this kind of floodplain here, a flat area into the wetlands, get it through the village to the other side of Route 14, I think we would be in much better shape, and that's what these folks that came on March also felt.
Did they see and, point out anything along the way that...
Yeah, Ben Matthews came up with four or five things, like between the post office and the yellow house that's that way, getting rid of the granite blocks that are on the west side of Route 14, because the water is channeling there, doing some sloping, like similar on the east side of Route 14 that U Trans did. Ben mentioned that we would probably have to periodically, like every three or four years or after any kind of flooding event, get a permit to dredge the brook, to get rid of the stonewall that comes down, you know, I think the road crew did quite a bit of that, and I think U Trans did some, but it still wasn't down to the level it was before the flood last summer. They were a little bit concerned with the box cove of Cabot Road up here, because in its 90-degree turn at Ron's place, it's already starting to erode around the wings of the box cove, and then doing something about what's happening on Bradford's property, where the water is coming straight down and making a 90-degree turn, water doesn't like to do that, it likes to go straight, so...
But it does slow the water down.
Yeah. Something, you know, some kind of permit fixed there. There was another, I think there was another thing I mentioned too, but yeah, he could see a lot of, you know, a few things that would probably help. The fact that the box cove that got put in Route 14 was not really the size that was recommended.
This one?
Yeah.
Really? Recommended by?
Whoever recommended that amount of the flood.
The H&amp;H, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
But they couldn't get the size.
They couldn't get the right size. And then with the December snow melt, the water was right up to the top of that, so, but that's, that's not probably gonna get taken out of the big picture. So, yeah, I think it's worth a try to do in the pre-application for this, but I would like to have a sense of commitment from the town that if we were awarded this grant, that you would kind of stick with it, it is a three- to five-year project, which would be an engineering first, you know, all of those sort of steps.
And would you stick with it?
Well, if I'm still alive, I might. So...
I'm not doing that again.
Right, and I'm hoping that CVRPC is the one that will be dealing with FEMA, not us.
So is that your only hesitation? It's a four- or five-year project, hesitation in pursuing this?
Well, that's not a hesitation on my part, but it might be, you know, the town's part, it's like always part. You know, I just feel that something needs to be done to get the water out, you know, through the village and then into the, this kind of flat floodplain there, and yeah, I think that...
Does anyone know whether the people in the yellow house are actually applying for a buyout, or is that just a rumor?
Paul S. Rudy seems pretty definite that they are.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
I assume that if he feels that way, it is true.
Right, he would know.
So I guess, you know, what I would like permission to do is to just go through the pre-application process and we can see from there if we were awarded it and we decided didn't want to do it, but there's no commitment with the pre-application.
If you want, I'll dig out some of that old information that I gathered on the cost of, although, you know, the numbers from five-plus years ago are gonna look pretty small compared to what would have happened in the meantime.
Coming up with the facts of what the village is...
The picture from the Gazette of Bud, what's his name, it was... what's his name, it is out there.
Bud Ed.
Yeah, Bud Ed with his tip boots on, walking around his driveway.
I remember that photo.
He's long gone.
I would, I would say yes, please do, but I don't want to speak for everybody.
I agree, and I would add a thank you for being willing to take that on.
All right. All right, back to Skip on a proposed animal ordinance. Does anybody want lights on? No, all right. Proposed animal control ordinance, which I believe you sent to us, right?
Yeah, I, I think Diana is a proposed agenda. I understand it was something regarding a dog. So it was just to reacquainten the board with the two ordinances. One of which is an update to existing animal ordinance, and the second one, the large domestic animal ordinance, could be granted. But the migrant ordinances, again, just an update to the existing ordinance. So just, just to show the board that the documents are there, they're available, and act as usual.
Did you send us new links to those proposed ordinances?
I saw them, yeah.
I think I probably didn't. Come on, good for her, again. We got to take pics of our.
There's only one ordinance that's new.
I'm sorry?
There's only one new ordinance.
You're just saying that there would be an update to an existing one or a proposed.
Yeah, and the changes, we'd have to look at the old one and figure out what the changes are, or you could explain that at some point.
Well, what I did though is 2012. And it was updated, taking into account many changes to the state statute. Since we're Dillon's law state, we have to align the state statute, so that narrows the statutes 2012 if the updates does 2012. And it's much more complete than the existing statute, which I think is dated 2011. So, you know, it's just, I may have been a little over still here, you know, and if there was another animal complaint would be worthwhile, I would need to take a look at these again, or at least one.
Well, since we're on the subject of animal complaints, I just would say that the one that we got two weeks ago from West Woodbury, I managed to get in touch with Dean Mercer, who was the, used to be the animal control officer in Hardwick, and now he does several other towns around. And I just happened to come across his name, I couldn't even remember if that's the guy. I talked to him and he was more than willing to go up and meet with those people. And he said he'd think about whether or not he might be able to be the Woodbury Animal Control Officer under contract. He knows what he's doing, certainly. And he went up to West Woodbury, he talked to the person who made the complaint, and he talked to the people who, the person who claimed that they're not his dogs. But anyways, at least it was some response. He said that the person who had the dogs, that the dogs belonged to someone who used to live on his property, he moved away, but the dogs run back, and then he calls them, and the guy comes and gets his dog, and whatever. So I, he suggested that the complainant actually might take some pictures next time if this happens again. I should get back to him and suggest that. So.
So he'll get back to us whether he's interested in?
Hmm?
He'll get back to us to to let us know whether he's interested in.
Yeah. Yeah, I also got another call from another guy from Hardwick, who I guess had talked to this Dean and said he was interested in being our animal control officer. I said, well, since I don't know you, we don't know you, do you want to come to a meeting? So he said he would come to one of our meetings. I mean, it would certainly be preferable to get somebody local, but if we can't, if we could find someone with some from another town, that'd be nice.
If you've got somebody willing. Diana, was that Steve Mercer or Mercer?
Dean Merce. Dean Mercer, I think. M E R C I E R, I can't remember now.
All right, so Skip, your recommendation is that if we have more animal control complaints, that we revisit those too.
It's up to the slip.
Yeah.
The light, I mean, yeah, it's almost harder to get a dog control officer than to get somebody, to get somebody who would also do the large animal complaints.
Right.
Yeah, I have read them, and I think you know that I have concerns about ordinances. It's not for lack of appreciation to all the work that you've put in on those, but I just sort of, as a general rule of thumb, would prefer not to add ordinances of any kind. And that's just speaking as me, not for you guys, obviously.
Well, again, one is just an update of an existing So, you know, that would be in addition. You know, in addition, it would be the, you know.
Can you tell us what that update is to the to the existing ordinance? Can you tell us what the update is?
You know, it happens in 2012.
Okay.
And so what was updated was to make sure that the statute stated, cited, and the 2011 ordinance still applied. And they did. So I don't know if I put, you know, changes to the document. I don't know if I cited what it changed. It's been lost since then.
Unfortunately, our large animal situations haven't been a problem lately.
We haven't seen anything eaten on earth, so that's a good thing.
All right. Updates another business. Liz?
Yep. I sent out Rusty again this morning because I was so confused by all this paperwork. But he helped me to narrow it down. Most of what he sent over wasn't stuff we needed to sign anyway, which is partly why I was so confused by it. So these three pages are what we actually do need to sign. And it's just a monitoring agreement with MEI. So they have a third party person who will do the monitoring. It's $275 annually. It's self-renewing, so next year it'll renew, basically unless we tell them not to. So it's basically just one of us that has to sign it. I don't know if you, as a chair.
Is this the same company that does the monitoring for the school?
Same exact thing. So I asked them to, as far as the people that were that were listing to be the ones who are contacted, if there's an issue, I asked Rusty to list the people that the school has listed already.
Okay, yeah.
Which is, I wrote them down.
Paula?
Nope.
Nope.
It is Jason, somebody who works at the school, and Donnie Turgeon. And I think it's Jason, it's going to be on there someplace. So anyways, they're already listed. I told them to just go ahead and do it, and then I double checked with the school, and the school said it was okay.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, bye. All right, so they only want one signature?
Yep, and they don't need your social security number. It's, you can, it asks for it somewhere, but he said you can
Do you have our tax ID on you?
No, sorry.
Yeah, that's that.
Thank you. Robin, could you, if I give this to you, do you think you could fill in the tax ID number and then get it mailed out to MEI, which the address is on here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go free something, that's all I know.
So the town hall roof, that was one of my projects that I have now completed. Thank you for the RFP, Skip, the sample RFP. And Michael, you sent those along. We'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I think, yeah, this is the greatest school. So this is a big, much bigger project than the.
Yeah, the library would be more of kind of.
Is that the one you sent this?
Yeah.
Okay, I should have printed that one out instead.
Now, why don't we flip these, the complaint to the health department, and we'll go to you for that. We'll flip those around.
Yeah, I don't know whether we should, I did not put in an executive session.
For this complaint?
Yeah. Well, I would like to do it, I'd like to talk about it in an executive session.
Okay, for reasons of?
Just privacy.
Is it the one we already talked about, or is this a new complaint?
Yes, but different. Yeah. Well, actually, it's the same one, we were going to do a site visit, and you agreed to do a site visit with me. And so maybe we should just go ahead and do that, plan to do that next week sometime.
Yep, and then.
And then I can play about the complaints.
Okay. You still would like to do an executive session tonight, or we'll wait till the next?
Well, I would like to, but I don't know how, you know, somebody might complain.
If we didn't warn it, that's great, we can't do it if it's not.
Yeah, we can do it.
We can, we can call.
We can have a check-in session in the parking.
But it just needs, it just needs to be for a good reason.
Gotcha.
So it needs to be for personnel issues. Michael, you probably know all the other reasons that we can. But if we're talking about a sensitive topic for a community member, I'm not sure.
No, it's not one.
It's not? Okay, I'm not sure.
Not just being decent hats, my mom.
So we'll.
We'll just.
Technically, it could be for possible litigation.
Yeah, that's true.
Depending on the nature of the.
Team day-to-day, industry matter, let's see, I think
And is it possible to talk about it in open session without using names? Or is that?
Yeah, I guess we could do that. So I just had another complaint, a more serious complaint about the same people that were complained about last.
Okay.
Last week, two weeks ago.
Can you tell us what the complaint was?
The complaint was a relative of one of the people that are living on the property that was complained about.
I don't, I don't understand.
The kid's father.
But what did, like, what was the complaint? Like, what did they?
The people are living in squall, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know how we can help somebody like that.
Was it a threat to the public health?
What?
Was it?
Well, that's the thing, it's, you know, as a public, as a town health officer, I have to deal with things that are, I can only deal with things that are a threat to the public You know, so people who are not, don't have proper sewage disposal, as long as it's not running onto somebody else's property, it's not something the health officer can really take a stand on.
I would think if there was concern about a child and their living circumstances, we're not the people to call for that, it would be like decent.
Well, yeah, but if we could do a health officer report, it would help other levels.
Gotcha.
So let's go this week?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, no, happy next week.
Okay, let's go next week.
Okay.
Which is what, the first week of July? So earlier in the week is obviously probably better. Probably don't want to go on the fourth.
Yes. So we have, like, is there a holiday or? We could go, want to try for Monday, Tuesday?
Sure, let's just, let's do Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's either got to be for me, first thing in the morning, or towards the end of the day.
End of the day for me.
You don't want to do it like more than the afternoon, 11?
I mean, I do, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so 5:15, does that work?
Sure.
Okay, so Diana, 5:15, July 1st. You want to meet here and then go up together?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll meet right up front here.
Okay.
Sounds good. I mean, just, just so you know, the last time, I mean, Alfie, you've had the same experience as the last time Liz and I went up, like, nobody answers the door. And so it's really difficult to actually make contact.
Yeah, we can only do what we can do, I guess. Oh, but this time I can bring this.
It's official.
I believe so. They wouldn't talk to us unless they knew who we were.
Got it.
He's gone.
The car has been moved.
Yeah.
I thought I saw that it was not there.
They just moved, that's up. Somebody moved it.
No kidding?
It's good.
That's good.
Nobody from the town.
We didn't.
I heard it was an old white Dodge pickup with a trailer that day.
Uh-uh, it sounded like Mike.
All right, so I think that addresses our health department issue.
Okay.
And we're going to take a look at bills and payroll orders and approve those and sign them, and then we will adjourn at some point when we're done with that.
Thanks, everyone.
Gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Sure, let's do it. We're still here for you guys.
Do you want me to wait for these, or somebody going to drop them off?
Robin, come with this butter, if you want to wait, I can bring them home.
Doesn't make any difference, I pick up the chairs while you're signing.
Okay.
Can I, could you?
Can he have that copy? We don't need that.
Well, I can just look at it. It's okay. I could just take another copy. Yeah, so that's. So Randy, this is all the places where money comes in. But she did those all this winter. These overpayments are something, probably a once a week thing. That is probably the one that's. And these two, I haven't agreed to cover any of that. And then you do that, most likely, mine, my town, shares are, I mean, part of, it's a cash payable cap, and then
So the library, probably, the library does have.
Okay.
They do.
We may actually have that in Florida. It is too fast.
You want me to request into Randy that she attaches one of those to each one of those handles? She did.
You don't believe because, hey, I don't want to hear anything. I hear it. Yeah, she doesn't mind, I'll be here.
She raises them up, and they don't mean anything to me either.
I have a really excellent.
Oh, yeah. I'm taking the easy one.
Am I getting the biggest girl? Look at this.
I light on it in the dark. Everything looks really good.
Right.
Dark money figure. Oh. Look at that.
Wow.
What's cargo?
Cargo is, is the, off or the chloride? Do you wanna see these?
Yeah, thank you.
She is going to, I believe, do another payroll at the end of this week, so she might want to
Yes, she is.
Yeah, she might want to come down and sign that.
Okay. What's jet service?
Emeralds, letterhead.
You got letterhead?
'Cause she just got some new, um, or some white emeralds for us.
How about Kirk yard services?
That does the morgue?
Oh, yeah?
No, that's the
Oh, the cemetery, I'm sorry, the burials.
Cemetery, what did he call himself? Not the paid
Sexton?
Sexton, thank you.
What is Sexton?
Yeah, good question. Somebody asked me the other day how the cemetery commission got off making such a huge increase in the crisis without going to the public for the murder.
You guys, I have something on her that's highlighted and I don't wanna say it on camera because it's an employee thing. I have a question over. But I don't think he, I don't think the employee highlighted it. I'm assuming Randy did. Does he have sick time? I can't, we gave him vacation time starting, but he's still in his, like, six months whatever.
No, we did give, we gave him
I know, we did vacation.
A quarter of a year worth of
We did.
And we just didn't give him any, any personal time.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So he started like April, May, June?
Yeah. I'm assuming that's why those were highlighted.
So the thing about the complaint that came into the office today was from that boy's
What's that on camera?
Oh, shoot, I thought he was, he unplugged it. I thought you were, I thought you were finished. You couldn't write your
No, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, you're
Fine. Tricky.
So same scenario, you guys. So I'm just gonna let everybody go look at this.
Yeah.
That is less than forty.
Yeah, so.
Well.
So he doesn't get paid for forty.
I thought, no.
No, that was a
That was our Yay.
I don't really know what I'm looking at for this one.
Is this the office supplies one? Or no?
No, there's a
Is it here?
I mean, that
I think it's like payroll taxes. I'm not totally sure either, but social security.
Can you run, what this, what if I went back here? Some payroll report. The payroll was like seven grand or something, yeah? And then this federal tax deposit.
I feel like that's all the other stuff, right? The stuff that you don't actually get paid, but that goes to, is part of your paycheck, but you don't keep it, unfortunately.
Our goal is deicer. I guess that's fluoride, right?
Fluoride goes on, then didn't that go on the dusty roots?
Yeah.
But this, the deicer, salt, so I guess maybe So the last we did it, asked for a deposit, Robin?
No.
Put that on your proposal, but I figured that was just standard. And since we're such a good customer, they would test us, right?
Yeah, they, uh, let the oil tank pump down, the oil tank out of the building. But we don't have our propane set up.
Oh, okay. Well, it's a good time of year to be without a heating system, I guess.
Better now than February.
That's right.
Are those all Woodbury people that fought in World War II? Is that what that honor roll is? Are they all people that died in the war or that fought?
Well, good, they bought some of their, they spent some of their clothing on us. I was wondering about it. Yeah. Shorts, running jeans, cargo screen.
You can rub this there.
Yeah.
Kirk yard, six hundred dollars. Oh, Jerry Hall went into the Westwoodbury Cemetery, didn't he?
Yes.
He paid six hundred dollars. I mean, that's almost, I mean, they charged eight hundred dollars to dig a hole in Hope Cemetery and now Woodbury is almost up. It used to be, two, three years ago, Don Turgeon would dig the hole and maybe he'd get a hundred dollar tip or fifty dollar tip.
Yep.
Anyways, oh, I'm sorry that camera's still on. Ah, please stop.
Haven't it turned yet? It's gonna stay on.
Nobody would watch to the end anyways, right?
They'll watch without How do you think meeting in here?
It's kinda nice.
I really like it.
Yeah.
It's nice because I can't hear anything.
The echo?
It's hard to
I think it's a problem. I mean, I could never hear Lindsey.
Oh, yeah, it's hard to hear.
You need to be trying.
In summertime, in my, summertime, might that make sense, but
Yeah. Do you think, I know, like, I've been in meetings here before when they had the doors open because it was hot and when the cars were going by, like, I can't hear anything. Yeah. I could hear tonight, but I was closer to I will look.
Well, I would be very, it's really nice.
Yeah. I'd be up for that.
Okay.
It's nice use of the building.
It is nice use of the building. What do you think, Jerome? What do you think of this place? Do you think you have meetings in here?
It's a little big. I, I don't know how the audio is going to turn out.
It's a good point, yeah.
Those should be nice stacks. Would you just look through?
It is nice.
Those should be nice stacks.
I would like living in this place.
It's almost like a church, nice and open.
Robin, do you still take care of like the
Just the lunch?
Yeah. So if you want, one must rent it, it comes to you?
Yes. There's no alcohol tobacco allowed in the building.
Has it always been that way?
For quite a few years now. It's because of the insurance, the insurance Q L T C, that's one of the requirements.
Because we hosted Gretz's fortieth birthday party here and I'm pretty sure we didn't follow those rules.
Oh, wow.
My family had all of our wedding receptions in here.
Yeah.
Oh, no kidding. Did you follow those rules at that time?
Back then, the people wasn't there.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody was here smoking outside, we were, we had alcohol in here.
We're getting it back on camera. Jerome sweeping the floor every day.
Off camera. I think it's good that they're in on my
I don't know, there could be
I feel like it's still a problem.
Is this, pardon this?
Yeah, that's good.
I tried my house today, not a bad one, but it
From the rate?
From the rate, it crushed all my ladders. They were all high up.
I crushed them.
Like
They're done.
Like, yeah. Like, I'm not clogging on them anymore. I was thinking about filing an insurance claim, but I don't know.
Should
Probably a thousand dollars. I should just ask. I don't have a reason to rate it or anything like that.
I've got, we're not using our ladders right now?
Oh, thank you. I, I had a little ladel for
It's on fire.
I think we even crushed them.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, I'm angry. I haven't dumped all the dirt off yet, but I feel like those ladders, like, visibly very thin. I'm not trusting it. Well, plus, my thirty-two
Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Yep. All those favors?
I
Meeting adjourned at eight oh six.